So, um, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Committee of the Whole for March seventh. Uh, I'm Councillor Wainwright in the chair. Uh, on my right is, uh, Councillor Garnett and my left is, uh, Mayor McNeil Smith. Our four colleagues are on Zoom, uh, Councillor Duncan, uh, Councillor Fallett, Councillor O'Keefe and, uh, Councillor Rintool. So I'd like to, uh, call the, uh, meeting to order and start out by acknowledging that we're holding this, uh, meeting in the, uh, Wasanich territory. And, uh, we, uh, respect that they've been stewards of these lands for, uh, uh, since time immemorial. And that, uh, we are striving for a better relationship moving forward. So, committee, uh, moving on to the approval of the agenda. So we have, um, a few late items. Uh, these are correspondence, uh, seven A two and also seven C two and seven D two. Also, um, it's, uh, fairly obvious we're gonna have a lengthy meeting tonight. And I would suggest that, um, we actually defer the grants and aid, uh, to a future meeting. And the last thing that I'd like to deal with during the, uh, approval of the agenda or amending the agenda is the time for the, uh, public participation after item seven A I. And that's, um, according to our bylaw, there's a maximum of ten minutes. We've got six people registered to speak and I'm gonna suggest that we give them, uh, four minutes apiece. Um, the other thing that I'd like to deal with in the approval of the agenda, one of the speakers is asked to give a PowerPoint. And, um, our bylaw is silent about the ability to do that during a public participation. Um, I would suggest that if committee is comfortable, we make an exception for that for this evening only. And that, um, the speaker who has the PowerPoint, uh, will have to live within the four minute limit, um, that everyone else has got. Um, so that's the, uh, the items related to the, uh, to the approval of the agenda. Uh, I don't know if committee would like to discuss any of that, but, uh, I do need two motions. One would be to refer the grants to a future meeting and the other one to, um, adopt the, uh, agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to move the grants to a future meeting.
Okay, that's moved by, uh, Councillor Fallett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Councillor Garnett. Uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Uh, that's carried unanimously. Now regarding the, uh, agenda, uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I would move, uh, the agenda as amended to, uh, include the additional items to, uh, change, uh, special public participation period under seven A, uh, to a maximum of four minutes, uh, to extend the time and to allow speakers a maximum of four minutes and to allow, uh, the PowerPoint presentation.
Second.
That's moved and seconded by Councillor Garnett. Any discussion? Uh, Councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. Just a question in regards to the, um, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation. Within our bylaws, there is a section that allows, uh, for presentations of up to ten minutes. Is this something that could be included as a, as a presentation?
Um, potentially it could have, uh, been done like that. However, it is, um, specifically in relation to this development. And, uh, there wasn't a request to give a presentation. The request was, um, to speak during public participation. So that's why we're handling it like this.
Okay, so for future, if individuals wanted to make a presentation on whatever topic, they would need to ask for that in advance specifically for the ten-minute presentation then?
That's correct. And, uh, if that did happen, the only comment I'd make is that I think it would be important to try to be fair and that if we're giving one individual a ten-minute opportunity to speak about a development, we should be prepared to do that for everybody.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, um, so we've got the, uh, uh, the motion in front of us. Uh, I'll call the question. All in favor? Posed? Seeing no one opposed, the agenda is adopted as amended. Okay, so we'll move on to start with, uh, public participation period. And we have one individual, uh, registered for that. And that is, uh, Mr. Philip Sutton, uh, theatre manager from the Mary Winspear Centre. And I understand you're here to speak about the liquor license amendment later on the agenda. Um, sir, you have the floor. If you could, um, come up to the, uh, the podium and, uh, just hit up the button to, uh, turn on the microphone.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, councillors and, and mayor for, uh, letting me speak. You know, uh, the, uh, we have had a lot of success over the pandemic, uh, with, uh, doing different things and, and increasing public participation, uh, in the Mary Winspear Centre. We've brought in a lot of, uh, new people from, uh, you know, the su- surrounding municipalities, uh, into here. And we've been able to, uh, you know, further our model and, and give a lot, a lot more service to our patrons. And, uh, you know, it's, it's been successful. Um, you know, we've, we've operated all of the licensed areas as described. Uh, we've had no complaints. Um, and just one quick anecdote, uh, there was a gentleman who, uh, he said that he had a box at Savon Foods and that now he was just gonna come and attend, uh, all the shows at the centre. And I think just the whole package, uh, you know, just brings it all together, including, you know, the other side of our businesses, uh, the conferences, uh, and, uh, and weddings, et cetera. And I thank you.
Thank you. So that, um, concludes our public participation period. Uh, we'll move on to approval of minutes. And we have the minutes for the February seventh meeting.
I'll move the minutes be approved. Second?
So that's, uh, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, uh, moving on then to item number seven A. And this is, uh, official community plan amendment application number OP one zero 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 thirty-six and zoning amendment application number RZ one zero 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 one oh four. And this is twenty-one eighty Beacon Avenue West. And this, uh, the application is to allow for a five-story, uh, hundred and forty-one unit multifamily residential development. And we have a presentation by the applicant, which is, uh, Dean Strongatharm. And I believe you've got some others with you. Okay, um, you have the floor?
Oh, thank you, sir. Um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, Members of Council. My name is Dean Strongatharm. Uh, I am acting as the planner and coordinator for this project. Uh, with me this evening, uh, which I think you probably can see is Joe Newell, the architect, and Brad Forth, the landscape architect. Andy Zhao also identified himself earlier on and is, uh, you know, in on the, uh, online. Uh, Mr. Anupam Kathari was expecting to be on the meeting tonight, but something unexpectedly has occurred and he certainly extends his regrets and apologies. Uh, certainly it's a pleasure to introduce this, uh, project to you. It is a fairly significant project and we certainly welcome council's feedback. Um, I know we have a limited time to give this presentation and it's always a bit of a balancing act, knowing that it is a fairly significant application and obviously wanting to make sure the council is aware of things, but also mindful that you'll have a full agenda. With that, I would also, uh, I guess compliment and, uh, on the, the, the staff report which council has in front of you. I think it certainly thoroughly describes what this project is all about and commend the staff for their, uh, very, uh, specific, um, uh, comments and report to council. With that, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, I will just, uh, bring the PowerPoint up on the screen and then say I'll try to move through this as, as quickly as possible. Um, hopefully this works. Um, so again, this is, uh, at the corner of Beacon and, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the control here. Uh, what do I have to do? Click? But I'm waiting.
Right here.
Right there?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, okay. Um, again, I think everyone knows it's a very strategic property located at the corner of, um, the Pat Bay Highway, uh, and Beacon Avenue. Uh, if I go to the next slide, uh, again, it is very strategic because as you can see, the red dot in the middle, uh, it is, uh, within walking.
Sorry to interrupt. Um, I don't think your slides are showing quite properly on Zoom. We're mostly seeing a big orange square, um, and a small view of, well, thumbnails of all your slides along the bottom.
Okay, well, let's, we'll try to regroup. My apologies. Is that working now?
That's it. Thank you.
Oh, my apologies. Uh, me and technology, I'm sorry, our, oh my gosh, uh, our, which window actually goes?
Just click anywhere.
Let's click anywhere. Oh, I see how I move that. Uh, okay, now I got my apologies. So once again, it's a strategic site. As you say, it's the proximity of the, uh, of the kind of major workforce area and employment hubs of the airport, uh, Swartz Bay Ferry Terminal and of course downtown Sydney. It's close to many of the amenities and, uh, uh, of, uh, that Sydney offers and enjoys, uh, and it would certainly receive a very high walkability rating in terms of its location relative to services. Uh, by way of summary, it's, it is about a two-acre site, so it is a large site. And as I say, the application is to develop a hundred and forty-one residential, uh, rental apartment units. Site is generally flat. As mentioned at the outset, it's proposed to be a five-story building, uh, or oriented towards the, the, towards the highway. Uh, more than half of the parking, in fact, about sixty percent of the parking is located underground, preserving more area for open space. And that does show up in the, uh, in the planner's, uh, staff's report. Uh, and certainly the Sydney Housing Need Study found, uh, you know, a serious, uh, shortage of rental accommodation Sid- in Sydney. And I think even more recent surveys that have done by CMHC with respect to the, the, uh, dire shortage of rental housing, uh, is certainly sort of exemplifies the, that, that which was outlined in Sydney's Housing Need Study and which is also exacerbated, uh, by the, uh, the very high cost of construction. This is, uh, located, uh, in the, um, on the west, on the west side of, of the highway, so it's in the, um, uh, the west side, the west side local area plan. Uh, we are very much aware that, uh, that this town is going through an OCP review, uh, currently uh, and has just gone out for, uh, public, uh, review and, and discussion. Um, the site as currently shown in the draft OCP is for multi-unit residential, which is consistent with the West Side Local Area Plan, identifying it for, if I go to the next slide. Uh, and if you can see at the bottom, it's identified as West Side Residential. When you look at the policies and the principles and policies of the local area plan, as well as what is described in the, uh, in the draft OCP, the new draft OCP, um, the application is consistent with the policies and, uh, and, uh, and principles, uh, contained uh, in both, uh, both the draft as well as the existing, uh, local area plan. Just in terms of site planning, without getting into the details, uh, quite a lot of attention is paid to how is best to actually site the building, recognizing that to the, to the west, there is the, there is an, uh, an existing residential neighborhood. So quite deliberately, the building has actually been, uh, uh, pushed towards Pat Bay Highway away from the residential neighborhood. The, this has deliberately turned the corner around onto Beacon Avenue, uh, so that there's a, a continuity along Beacon Avenue while the Pat Bay Highway. Um, and also a significant amount of attention, both from the architect and the landscape architect, has been paid with respect to the actual kind of central feature in terms of how prominent the site is at the, at the, at the intersection of Beacon and, um, uh, and the Pat Bay Highway. And more will be said about the actual building itself a bit later. Um, again, in terms of site data, uh, as you can see, um, the, 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 the building is consistent with the, with the, uh, local area plan. Uh, it has a lot coverage of about thirty-five percent, which is substantially less than, than number of the zones, uh, that it, that are for, um, uh, multifamily residential development. Part of that is because, of course, the majority of the, of the, of the, um, parking is underground. Uh, we are showing, uh, we actually had a, a parking demand study done, which showed that the parking demand for the rental apartment in this location would be about point, point nine stalls per unit. But they emphasized the need for, uh, the importance of having, uh, visitor parking. And so they recommended a total of a hundred and forty-one stalls, but we have, uh, actually the, the current, uh, plan shows a total of a hundred and forty-six. Uh, I'm getting a bit ahead of myself, but I should say that I know one of the things that was commented by neighbors when we had the neighborhood meeting was wanting to make sure that there was adequate parking so that they weren't parking on the adjacent residential streets. So we've, we've tried to take that, um, very much into account. I should also add at the very bottom point that there currently is and is not finished yet, um, as requested by staff, uh, there's a transport, uh, uh, a traffic impact assessment study currently be carried out. And we're anticipating receiving that report within approximately the next two weeks. Um, and I think the only thing I really just wanted to point out here is the fact that there is a very high number of two and three bedrooms compared to most other projects that I am certainly involved with. And also the size of the units is certainly larger than many of the projects that I have been involved with, which I think very much provides for both greater visibility and support and, and supports, uh, the encouragement of, of families. Um, next slide. And I just point this out and there will be a bit of an architectural description, but the, the, the building, uh, is very much articulated and it has a, it has a very, a variety of different facades. Uh, there is a significant break in the building at the midpoint. And then as I say, with the articulation of, of, uh, of, between balconies and architectural features, uh, it, uh, it, it is, in my view, a very attractive building. And again, you can see this rounded curve at the intersection of Beacon and the Avenue, which is dovetailed actually at the north end. Again, all part of the architectural features and bringing the building, uh, at the, certainly at the street level, making these almost townhouse looking on the Beacon Hill side, again, to create, bringing the, the building closer to the s- the, the street frontage. Uh, the top floor plan I'll only point out is that it is actually set back from the other floors, once again providing more interest in our click and, and articulation. Um, uh, and again, I just point out that, uh, well, uh, it, there is, uh, the majority of the parking is actually under the, under the, directly under the building. And so we've tried to make sure that all of the parking that is underground is actually directly under the building and is not extended out beyond, more or less beyond the building face, again, in order to, uh, to allow for, um, more land that can be either landscaped or, and is not, and is not, and not hardscape. Um, with this, I think I'd like to just pass this over to Joe Newell, the architect, just to briefly describe the, um, the architectural characteristics and the, and particularly as it relates to some of the, uh, the facade treatment. Joe?
Yep. Um, this is the elevation facing Beacon Avenue and you can see we've been trying to, trying to, um, make ground for units have a, a street presence with the gates and, and the stone walls along the, uh, back of the municipal sidewalk there. Um, we intend to incorporate the bus shelter into the, into that wall as well, as well as the, the, the two entrances to the project as a whole. The corner that Dean was talking about, the curved corner, has a, has a secondary entrance, um, which allows pedestrians to come into the project without, uh, going all the way around to the, uh, to the main entrance on the courtyard. Uh, the materials are a mix of stone, um, fiber cement, horizontal siding and, um, sheet metal to just kind of refer to the, the semi-industrial areas behind, behind the site in, um, in West Sydney, West Side. Um, wanna go to the next. So this is the, uh, courtyard elevation, the main long court, uh, courtyard elevation with the main entrance in the middle there with the, uh, kind of a red, a red, uh, accent all the way through the building. The fifth floor, um, is set back five feet from the, from the lower levels so that, uh, from below, when you're sit- when you're on the ground, you're looking up, you're not gonna have that, uh, sense of a, of a looming wall five stories high. It's gonna be, uh, set back quite a ways. And that goes for both sides of the, of the building. So on the Pat Bay, uh, highway side and Beacon Avenue side, you've got that same, the same setback. Um, all the, all the units on the, uh, two, first two floors of the courtyard are three-bedroom family-oriented units. Go to the next one. Okay, and then this is the elevation along Pat Bay Highway showing that, that split, how we kind of exaggerated the, the, the fact that one, one half of the building is, is set back further from the other. Um, Brad will show you what, what's been, uh, what's been done with the landscaping where that, where we have a wider, uh, setback to the highway. And then, uh, the final slide here is just the, the three-D image from, looking from the, the intersection of Pat Bay Highway and Beacon Avenue showing that, that curved corner and the, uh, the, the, I shouldn't call it the main entrance, but it feels like the main entrance in this, in this slide, but the, the secondary entrance, um, off of the back of the, uh, sidewalk of Beacon Avenue. And it shows also like, sort of partway down the building, you see where that, that, the building has, uh, has, we, we slipped it along the, uh, the firewall to, um, break up the, the long elevation along Pat Bay Highway. Okay, um, Brad Forth will save it?
Hi, everybody. So here's the landscape plan. And, um, I think Joe's explained quite a bit of, uh, of the orientation of the building, but I just wanna highlight a few things we've done, um, to enhance the landscaping that, to work with the building. And one of the things you'll see towards the top right of your corner along the Pat Bay Highway is sort of a blue area. That is, um, a rain, will be a stormwater rain garden that, um, takes advantage of an existing channel that kind of runs along there. Um, it'll be highlighted with, you know, boulders and special plantings. And that area is a little wider because the building steps back there. So we wanted to create a special treatment that would give a lot of visual interest from the highway when you're driving along. Um, and then as the buildings, uh, in the middle, as it steps back towards the highway, that area, we're gonna retain a fringe of, uh, trees along there that we can keep. Um, that'll basically give those, um, units for about the first two, three floors, uh, quite a bit of natural privacy there. And then, um, along Beacon, Joe has mentioned the fact that we have sort of spent a lot of time on the, these, on the design of these townhouse feeling front gardens. Uh, my idea is that each of those would have a walkway entrance that comes out to the sidewalk, which gives eyes to the street and makes it feel like, um, a, a, an interesting residential kind of feel, street there, uh, where people could come out in their little gardens. And we put a main walkway from around the corner of the building along our surface parking that leads up, uh, from Beacon to the main entrance. And we've spent a lot of time orienting the features of the building on the main floor to enhance the building entrance. We have amenity rooms right next to the building lobby. And then off of the amenity room in the landscape, I'm proposing a, a west-facing terrace that has, um, access to a children's play area, um, which we're currently examining ways to kind of make a stronger connection from that space to over to Jan Crescent. Uh, but the idea of it being, uh, where parents can sit out and let, watch their kids play and because most of the three-bedroom units are on the ground, they'll have good access to that. Um, also, we've put in some birmingham and some trees along that area, some special flowering trees. Um, and we're considering putting, uh, kind of a community garden feel for the residents of the building in here, but we're working on massaging that still. Uh, it may, the form of it may change because of shading, but we're working on that right now. And the surface parking lot, um, is, um, located to provide the maximum separation from the residential, um, subdivision and our building. So we're essentially creating a nice green courtyard, um, of open space with, um, lots of trees punctuating that surface parking and special paving at the main entrances and hedging along the edge of that walkway, which will be retained as well. So that in short is the landscape design.
The, uh, and I, I would say this is actually just the detail of what was already, already described. And again, you can see the, uh, the, the, the amenity space, the outside patio area, the children's playground, uh, the pathway that's, that is separated from the parking lot and the main entrance into the, into the building. And as I say, we are working on some alternatives in terms of looking at the community gardens, which we think are important. Um, but we have, we're, as I say, it's kind of a work in progress, if I may say. And then again, this is something which is like this, an, an image, uh, showing, again, you can see the entrance, you can see, uh, uh, an indication of the children's playground area and kind of the extent of the landscaping that you can, that you can, uh, see from this image. Um, again, just in terms of housing and what is currently before council in terms of our original submission, uh, we are, as I say, there's a hundred and one forty, a hundred and forty-one units, of which sixty-two percent are two-bedroom or larger. Uh, we're proposing that there be a housing agreement entered into that, uh, these units get, be guaranteed to be rented for a minimum of ten years. Uh, and then we identified that there would be at least twenty, twenty percent of the units would be below market rents as defined by, well, again, a NOPA floor, uh, and below market rents is defined by what is the average family income in Sydney, which is significantly below the current market rent. And affordable, affordable rent is defined as not spending more than thirty percent of the median family income on, on shelter. So that's, we're working towards that. I should also then say that we've al- also had some, uh, recent discussions with CRD Housing Corp. Um, and, um, Stephen Henderson. And so we are actually having some further discussions with them. We're at a very early stage of maybe our opportunity for the, for, for CRD Housing to, uh, manage the affordable housing units and potentially have some additional, uh, participation. Um, we have arranged for further discussions and so I don't wanna preempt something. There, there's nothing that's been absolutely confirmed. Um, so I'd say I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but we are actually having further discussions with, uh, with, uh, CRD Housing, uh, Corporation. Um, again, I think some of you on this call may have been at the neighborhood meeting, which was held on January the twentieth, twentieth. It was certainly a very good meeting. We received a lot of comments, uh, really, very thoughtful comments. Uh, there was comments around parking and access, uh, particularly around access along Jan Place, so that it's a quiet cul-de-sac and wanting to make sure that it wasn't going to be a true road. And that's where the con- and certainly several comments came up with respect to, um, uh, you know, parking on Jan Place and wanting to make sure that there was adequate parking on the site so that there wouldn't be uh, blocking of that, of, of, of Jan Place. Uh, there were some discussions around the current zoning is and the proposed zoning is and in relationship to the, uh, local area plan and the, uh, draft, uh, OCP. A number of ma- did comments about to complement your design. Uh, there was comments, questions relating to, uh, construction scheduling and also the facing of this development relative to other developments as it relates to the, uh, local area, to the West Side Local Area Pan, Plan. There was discussions about the stormwater management and, and the issues around high water table. Um, and then also there was discussions about the tenure, the rental period as, as currently proposed. And of course, the, and the, the need for workforce housing in the community. There were some other specific things that were raised and a couple of them I, I hope, we, hopefully we've addressed with the individual, uh, folks that asked, that, that raised questions. But, uh, again, it was a very, very helpful meeting. There was about twenty people, twenty different, uh, people are, uh, participants, of which the numbers of cases, there were, there were two people. So there was probably around forty people outside the project team that were involved. And that's, it was a very, uh, a very good, uh, and healthy participation by neighbors. Uh, so in, uh, so I guess in summary, um, I think the, the application we believe is consistent with the, uh, local area plan principles and objectives. I think it will provide much-needed housing and provide, uh, many, uh, many amenities, uh, including amenities related to, uh, stormwater and, and other green features, which I have not this time, uh, gone into. Uh, includes, as I say, the below-market rents and have, uh, ample, uh, ample parking. Uh, that basically ends our presentation, Mr. Chair. And I, I would only comment, I guess, at the last is that I know in reading this, the staff report, uh, recognizing, of course, that you're going through the OCP review, uh, and your hope, the, the anticipation is that we'll be coming back before council within the next two to three months. Uh, and that, that perhaps it would be worth waiting for the OCP to go forward, uh, and then putting this on hold until that time. I would ask for council's consideration because we certainly would benefit from the feedback and input from the Advisory Planning Commission. And we'd certainly very much like to be able to go there to get, to get that additional feedback in order that as we actually work through the pro- the, the project with staff and others, that we can then also communicate back to council on, on how things, uh, evolve as the, as the, as the, uh, uh, application proceeds through the process. So I, I'm hoping that, uh, council may consider, uh, allowing the application, as I say, to go to the planning commission to get, um, further feedback. Uh, and Mr. Chair, I think with that, uh, comment, uh, that, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll close our presentation. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Strongatharm. Um, we do have a staff report. Uh, does staff have anything in the report they'd like to, uh, highlight or, uh, bring to attention of the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll defer to, uh, Ms. Verhagen.
Thank you. Through the chair to the committee of the whole. Um, no, thank you. Mr. Strongatharm gave a- No, thank you. Mr. Strongetham gave a great overview of the application. So I don't have much more to add. Just wanted to point out that the requested amendment to the official community plan. That is part of the application at this point would not be necessary if the draft OCP, the the draft official community plan that was just. Least for public engagement, if that is adopted as it is proposed to change that property's designation from the current designation of West Sydney Commercial. To what's in the draft OCP, which is multi-unit residential. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up to committee if there are questions and.
Bring the presentation now?
Okay, yes, if we could, if you could take the presentation down so I could see.
Thank you.
So I had Counselor Fallon first and then Counselor Rento.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Strongetham and crew for your presentation. First of all, just to go back briefly to the landscaping, I was pleased to hear that you are. Looking at. Perhaps some amendments to the the community garden. When I looked at the plan and I saw that the garden. Was overshadowed by a four or five story building from the east and south side. That is counterintuitive for any gardener and the community garden in essence would not be. An amenity for that building if the garden has lost the morning sun. So I'm, I'm glad that you're going to look at that. And that also goes to the other thing, the other part that grows and that's children. And the children playground is equally overshadowed. I realize that it has the west exposure. But that can be quite cold throughout the season if they don't have the morning sun. Realize you can't do much as far as the sighting of the the building for those matters, but. If there's something else you can think of, maybe a rooftop playground or rooftop garden, I'm a little. Little concerned for the number of children that you ostensibly want to attract. With this complex and whether or not those features will be. Fully appreciated. I don't know if you want to comment to that. I've got a couple of other questions I do want to bring up.
Yeah, we're working on it. I I wanted to, just when I made my presentation, I wanted to highlight the fact that we we are considering. Things like sun and shade and I wanted to put in as many vegetable garden boxes as I could. And so that's where the first genesis of the design came from. And but it will be shifted and we've got a few ideas that we're going to bring back to you. That will, you know, hopefully address some of these issues of sunshine for for the garden anyway. I I'm pretty confident that the play area will be in sunshine much of the time. And it's in a kind of a strategic location in the project and I feel like it'll make more sense even when we strengthen the connections with the walkway to Jan Place. Crescent. So we're looking forward to bringing something back a little more refined.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chair, if I can, a couple of more questions?
Go ahead.
Now, the other part is. The building, there is, there is a long stretch of the building that is parallel to the highway. And that's going to be noisy and it's going to be dirty. So my concern is. Soundproofing for the for the tenants and as well, what do they do for ventilation? Sound travels up, so even if you've got some mitigating factors for the lower floors, you're not going to put a fence up there. So my concern is, will these tenants actually be able to open up a window? And how will that impact their quality of life? And second to that, also looking at the structure of the building. And thinking about climate change and shading for the windows. If you don't have an overhang, are you going to be making any allowances for awnings to be installed so that the windows do have some covering? And some shade from sunlight?
Perhaps I could answer part of it. And that is just in in terms of the ventilation, while we have not got a fully, a full mechanical system. Designed yet, of course, but we, again, under our kind of our green features, one of the things that we have, we promised is that there would be. You know, meeting ASRA's standards as it relates to. Ensuring that there's ventilation both to to all of the interior rooms as well as the hallway. So the ventilation. Is also something that we are very mindful of. We will be looking at in terms of the actual use of of windows and what kind of blazing that we use, which. There are certain kinds of blazing, whether it's triple blaze or even double blaze, but with certain kinds of features where it actually does provide some sound attenuation. And I'll leave it to the, to the overhang, to to Joe in terms of what he's designed to be.
Oh, you pretty much answered. But yeah, the, I mean, when we get into the energy modeling of the building, that will determine, they'll, they'll be looking at heating as well as cooling. Making sure that the units are all, you know, stay at, stay at constant temperatures throughout the year. Even taking into account, you know, one-off items like the one-off events, like the the heat dome that we all went through last summer. They're all well aware of the fact that things are getting hotter and the apartment buildings tend, do tend to. You know, require a lot, a lot of cooling. All the units will be ventilated to, to, you know, address the 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 energy modelers, you know. Whatever they determine is required for the building. Most of the windows are shaded already. There's, there's only one floor there in the middle that's the, 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 the. There's banding that that goes through the project that that provides some shading to the windows, but we will. We will look at that as an option, the, when, when we get the energy modeler involved, he will, they, they will be. Telling us what, what we need to do in terms of shading in order to reduce the cooling loads. We have to meet a certain energy. Energy efficiency with the building and that will, that will be part of the ongoing design process. In terms of sound, again, the, you know, one of the things that we're having to do on all these buildings is continuous insulation on the exterior. So in addition to the, the, the thickness of the glass in the windows and whether it's double or triple glazed. The, the whole building has a, has a continuous layer of insulation on it, which helps to mitigate. Airborne sound as well from the highway. So that will go a long way to address the issue of noise from the, from the Pat Bay Highway.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. That's enough for me at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Counselor Rento?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Certainly, it's an interesting project and. Rental units are certainly of interest to help with our, our housing needs. There's no doubt about that. I guess I'd like to hear from you, the rationale for making the application for an OCP plan amendment and a zoning amendment. And not to coincide it with the development permit application. And I ask that because, you know, part of your presentation certainly stemmed in my mind to. It'd be more applicable to the development permit application phase. I'm sure a lot of the interest in the, in the community is going to stem, and certainly the APC is going to stem to the development permit application. So speak to us a little bit about that rationale and, and, and how much repetition you envision when we do have to go through the. Development permit application process.
But I think, Counselor, that it's fairly simple. We wanted to file the application, get it in, in terms of the land use application, knowing also that you're going through the OCP. So we wanted to have. The OCP review. So we wanted to, that you have an, an idea of, of, you know, what is being considered. Under the current local area plan policies and kind of get, get it in the door and get some initial feedback. As it relates to the development permit application, that is something which. We're actually, in terms of our process, we're not really that far behind. It is something that could be. Followed up in terms of the development permit application could actually. You know, catch up to the, to the rezoning and OCP amendment, but it was just felt that we wanted to get. We wanted to get the application in, we wanted to get feedback as it relates to the land use and the purpose and intent of the. Of the property and some initial feedback. And then based on that, obviously proceeding with changes as. Even from this, this meeting, this evening, and then look at that and the impact on design. For the, with the intent of filing a DP application in the not too distant future.
So there's no intent, then you're committed to the project and taking it to development permit stage? There's no intent to see it rezoned? And then sit on it?
No, no, definitely not. No, the, the intent of the app, of the Cathory Group is to. Get approvals and and build the project, so very much so.
Okay, I'll leave my questions and comment there, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Akif and then Counselor Duncan.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So first of all, I'll talk about the, the rentals and the rental tenure. So you're proposing ten years only. So for me, that's a concern. I'd be more interested to see. Rentals on that property in perpetuity. And so if you're looking for some indication about our future. Intent or interest, I'll, I'll just toss it out there that that would be my interest if we're going to. Reserve that land that we would use our, our powers to use that particularly for rentals. And I'm wondering, have you, have you considered that? Is that feasible for you or something that you think you could manage if? That's the direction we wanted to go?
Certainly, we will definitely take that under advisement and we will certainly get back to you. I, I, we have, I have had to be. Kind of some discussions with the ownership and so I'm sure, as I say, we come back. I'd say I'm hoping we can get to the Advisory Planning Commission, get some initial feedback and then we will report back to you and then I can perhaps comment. Or advise more specifically on what we can do with respect to your request.
Sure, okay. Also, in regards to the. Adaptable units that I, I presume that those will get factored into the equation. And what I would be interested in seeing is instead of the units being adaptable. That they were actually made accessible. And so normally in a condo building, we just ask for adaptable units. And then if someone who has perhaps physical or other disabilities would move in and adjust. To their needs. However, that doesn't seem like something that would be feasible in a rental building. First of all, a lot of persons with disabilities that are looking for rental housing wouldn't perhaps have the financial. Capability to redo a rental unit and that probably wouldn't be permitted. Under the terms of the rental agreement. So I'm wondering. Whether that's something that might be doable, that you would actually construct accessible units and I. You're talking about, you're talking to the CRD about perhaps managing the affordable housing aspect. And I'm wondering if you think that there might be opportunity there for them to manage those units as well?
Without sounding like I'm being invasive, I wonder if I can take that also under advisement. I've certainly made, I've certainly made notes on this. I mean, one of the. One of the iss- issues is, and I certainly am very sympathetic to the, the, the comments that you've made. But when you have fully accessible units, but you don't really have control over. The rental of it or leaving a potential unit vacant in anticipation of someone with accessibility needs looking for. Accessible units, it's a, it's a bit of a, bit of a conundrum, but perhaps there's some solution that. That can, can work to meet, you know, the comment that you've made. So I'm very much, as I say. I certainly understand the question and it's just a matter of the practicality, what can or can't be done in a rental. Rental unit. But as I say, I certainly made notes and will take that under advisement. Thank you so much.
Sure, and maybe BC, BC Housing might be able to help out there as well to give you an indication of. The number of persons with disabilities that are seeking rental accommodation out in our area. And that they might have some ideas on how, how that could be managed. Also, that was covered. In regards to. The, having these units primarily for people that work in, in Sydney. So do you envision being able to have some sort of process where there would be. Preference given to people who are working in Sydney?
Yes, and I, and I do, do note that that comment was actually made in the staff report as well.
Right.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record. So, I mean, it is something I think that we could consider and I know that there's been other projects where they have given. You know, preferential treatment for a certain period of time. It's just a matter of working out something that is balanced with the reality of you build a building and you have to pay the mortgage payment each month and. And how, how you do that. So, but I, I, I do, I do understand the desire in terms of. Because we do see this, the building having a strong attraction for a large workforce, workforce housing in the area. I also do see it that I could see where, you know, some people that may have been living in Sydney for a long, long time in their own. Personal detached dwellings and rather than get into either a condo or some other kind of living, they would actually prefer to be rented. So I actually see there two, and we've talked about, there's two sort of distinct, I can call it this markets. I think that this building would attract.
Sure. And then just one more, if I may, back to the topic of accessibility. I know you're not, you still got a lot of work to do, but in terms of your design of, say, the common spaces. You're talking about a playground and gardens, community spaces. So. Are you also, you know, thinking about is accessibility on your, your radar for those things as well?
For sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah, one thing I often hear from persons with disabilities is there might be adaptable units. But they, they find it hard to get in the front door or to access the laundry room or, you know, whatever the case. So that's good to hear. I think that's good for me. Thank you very much.
Counselor Duncan?
Thank you. I think Counselor Fallon had most of my comments about the garden sitting and, and the building itself. So I guess the only other additional question I had was, we, we have had an application before that was going to be. Quite tall going in next to residential buildings that were still, you know, only one or two stories. On, on Fifth Street. And what a lot of the neighbors were concerned about was the idea of having a very tall building and the people on their top. On the top floors being able to see down into their backyards and any loss of privacy that that entailed. And I feel you've mitigated that quite a bit just in the sighting of your building because it's, it's set back. Towards the highway and away from the residential area, but I'm just wondering if you will have. Have drawings, if there's something that you can show for those residents, because I, and, and for the public in general, because I know that's something. People have been concerned about in the past and it's. It's something that I can see coming up here because it's so much taller than the surrounding area.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Brad chat, but I, I do know that you're right, that was part of the, the deliberate site planning in terms of the sighting of the building. And then as it, as the window, or pardon me, the building that actually faces to the west, towards the residential neighborhood to the west. There are either exit stairs and or very much secondary building, secondary windows. So the, so all the units are either. Quite a long ways, a very long way setback from the property lines of the adjacent neighborhood on Jan Place and what have you. And when it, or when the building does, as I say, extend back towards the west. That those, those two end west walls, as I say, are largely stairwells and or secondary windows and the, the actual. Direction of the, the main window spaces is in a north-south direction, not, 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 not westerly.
Yeah, and we also stepped back the parking garage at that end where it comes in adjacency to those residences so that we can put. Large scale trees in there, along there to buffer the, the residences from the new building. And so with the combination of only secondary windows facing and then trees that can be already pretty tall because we've got the, it's growing in mother earth. We should be, we should be good there. And we did take a very careful look at that because we. We recognize that that's one thing that will still come up, I'm sure, with the neighbors and, and we wanted to try and deal with it early on.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Garnet?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mr. Tharman, Tharman and your associates for your presentation, and some of the other councils have already touched on some of the things that I was gonna discuss, mostly mainly the the idea of the shading on the on the gardens and the playground, and actually, I'm wondering if you have you had or are considering doing a shade study at all, was one of my questions?
Uh, yes, in fact, we were looking at in the context of the of the gardens already, so we've actually started that process, and that's when the comment that Brad made with respect to the location of the children's playground, that also related to some of the some of the studies that we've done, so we we can certainly made a note of that, and we can certainly get back and give council an update on that with respect to the actual specifics of the shadow studies, which we was not part of this presentation.
Thank you, and also, the the east elevation by the or the east side of the building by the Pat Bay Highway, I guess the concern there for me with the decks and windows is that there's gonna be times of the day when those are basically not even be feasible to be used strictly because of the nature of the traffic from the ferry, thousands of vehicles go through there every day, hundreds of vehicles parked at that intersection for two to three minutes, idling, and what impact that would have on residents in terms of, you know, even if they have like asthma or any kind of breathing conditions, that the pollution from the vehicles could be quite difficult for them to deal with, so they may have no choice even in the summer to have their deck and their windows closed at certain times of the day to accommodate for that and the noise that comes with it, actually. The right-in, right-out, and I know there'll have to be a traffic impact study done, in terms of the way it's set up, are there are there anything other than signage that would mitigate or prevent people from turning left out of there?
Uh, ye- yes, and again, we don't have our civil engineer with us this evening, but in terms of the actual design of the the design, the design of the right-in, right-out, it will be such that there would be curves that would prevent somebody from making a kind of a left-hand turn. We are in the process, as I say, of having a TIA done, the Traffic Impact Assessment, part of that will include looking at the detail of what that what that would mean in terms of the specific design for the right-in, right-out only, and so that would be tied into that in that assessment.
Thank you, if I may, Chair, a couple more, with regards to the affordable housing component, and this sort of, it's interesting, you had a slide there, and it and it had a picture of the lot, and you had employment hubs, and you had arrows pointed to the west-side industrial area and to the VAA industry lands, but it didn't actually point to downtown Sydney, which is curious for me.
Well, I didn't have an arrow, but I did have a, I did put downtown Sydney, so if I if if I if I erred, I do apologize, because I recognize, of course, that the significance of the of the employment in downtown Sydney along Beacon Avenue and the other supporting streets, so.
I'm sure the small businesses would appreciate that. And in terms of the 20% affordable housing, and referring to the housing needs assessment, and how dire, and actually, staff comments on it in in our report, just how dire the need for below-market and near-market rental is in our community, and it's, if you look from the unmet need of 2016 and going forward, it is predominantly what we need, I'm not gonna throw numbers out there, but we do have a building that's currently being built on Malibu and Fifth that almost accommodates all the numbers that the report is speaking to, so for me, I I'm glad to hear that you're reaching out to other organizations, because that on a on a on a scale of size of that development, 20% is approximately 28 units out of 141, I would certainly, I would be a lot more comfortable and would hope that there that would be a greater, we could get a lot more below-market or near-market rental units in that development, given the scope and size of it, it's just way too important of a need, and given what the ask is here, which for me is quite big, I would want something in return that really, really adds a huge benefit to our community, and especially our local small businesses who can't afford to pay the high-end wages that most of the most of the industries on that side pay. And the last point I would just make is that I I agree with Councilor O'Keefe, I I have real issues around the 10-year minimum as well, the in perpetuity is is something that's also important, 10 years from now, this may be owned by somebody different, council, staff even report, in their in their report states, you know, we should make sure there's an age covenant, if the strata, if the strata, well, if there's a strata, then it's not a rental anymore, so there is that potentiality for this to become a condo building, and then you have 141 units with 200, 244 approximately, whatever, and and children, maybe more people who are homeless, because they have nowhere to go, and they don't have the resources to buy the condos in the building, and our community already struggles for those units, so that is a seriously important issue, and really is something that I hope you take away the most from this meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Certainly, well heard, sir, so thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from committee, Councilor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. More more a comment, so when you had your your architect talking about the design of the building and tapping into the design guidelines for the West Side Area Plan, which talked about use of metal and sort of having that industrial sort of look, and while I realize that is what the West Side Local Area Plan says, what I would be hoping to see is something less industrial on that corner, and the reason is, is because that type of industrial design might be okay if it was right in, you know, the the center of that area, but that intersection is the entryway to our community, and so Sid- Town of Sydney, quaint little seaside town, so on that intersection, I would prefer something that sort of fit in with the character of of that, rather than an industrial sort of looking place. So that's just a comment for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, so committee, we, if there are other questions, fine, but we still have public participation, and then we're gonna deal with it afterwards, so Councilor Garnet, you have a question?
Would this be appropriate time to ask questions of staff?
That's fine, certainly.
And but I think the mayor has not spoken yet?
If you have a question of staff, it's reasonable, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, so I guess I guess for for clarity for the for the public, having this wait till after, tablings till after the OCP review is over, I just want to, it's more of a to allow the public to understand that the OCP amendment would not be required anymore, but the zoning amendment would be, and there would still be a public hearing, correct?
Yes, through the Chair to Councilor Garnet, yes, that is correct, that the zoning amendment and development permit application would still be required to approve this development.
And one one last question, if I may, so in in reviewing the West Side Local Area Plan document, it's noted twice in there, particularly under policy and regular regulatory context, A3 on page 12, that redevelopment should be phased from north to south, and then again, it says that under site analysis, current land use, A7, page 17, speaking that that any redevelopment must occur block by block from north to south, and it makes sense to me that way, because then you're having gradual densification from Henry towards Beacon, and it gives time for the residents to to adjust to the the densification, and it also allows for, I think, the infrastructure to keep on pace with what happens there, especially as you go towards the Beacon corridor, so I wonder if staff could comment to make a comment on that in regards to that particular aspect, and the fact that this is on the southeast corner?
Sure, again, through the Chair to Councilor Garnet, those are policies in the current official community plan, so the current OCP designation of industrial for the neighboring, that sorry, the neighborhood adjacent to this subject property to the west, those are current policies in the OCP, for if that neighborhood is to be redeveloped with industrial use, the West Side Local Area Plan acknowledges that development in this neighborhood would happen on kind of a piecemeal basis, and there's graphics in the West Side LAP to give an example of how that piecemeal development would happen, as individual property owners decide to apply to redevelop their properties. It doesn't say that development would need to happen from north to south.
So could I just ask you to clarify that one again? In the local area plan, it does not say development is supposed to happen north to south, it's the current OCP that has that, if it's going to develop as industrial, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, the current neighborhood over there, the property is on James White Boulevard West, I'm I'm looking to the side here to the map, John Place, Skylark, those are all designated as industrial in the town's OCP, current OCP, so if those are to redevelop as industrial, the current OCP has policies guiding that redevelopment to happen from north to south on a block-by-block basis. As I'm speaking here, I'm just pulling up the West Side Local Area Plan to give a page reference to the to the mentions in that West Side LAP document that talk about the the development over time, and give graphic examples of how that development would look as it happens over time. I can comment on that in just a moment after I've thought that, here, thank you.
Thank you. So I think we'll give staff a minute, but then I'd like to start the public participation part, and after the public participation, committee will have a discussion and decide what we want to do, and if you have additional questions or want to follow up on anything that happened in public participation, you could do that, too. Staff, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, no, that's it at this point, just looking at the West Side LAP document, it looks on approximately page 68, 69 of the document, there are some graphics on the side that show conceptual phasing, existing development, built form, initial redevelopment showing some properties redeveloping throughout the the West Side Mixed Use Village Neighborhood and the multi-unit residential area, establishing the village and then the built-out village, so that doesn't show and imply that development would not be happening from north to south, that's all.
Thank you, can I suggest that you add this topic, the development from north to south, to the OCP FAQ, because it seems to come up fairly often. So if if committee is okay, I'd like to move to the public participation, not seeing anyone wanting to jump in, okay, so the the first speaker registered for public participation on this one is Ken Rosatiak and Carly McWilliams, and I guess, are those individuals online? And if so, if you could unmute yourself in your video, and you have the floor? And I don't see them in the participant list. Is there a, Ken Rosatiak, a little lower down on the list? No? If you could just scroll the participant list on the the right there? Yep, Jake, okay, I do not see them on, okay, so if they do turn up, we'll give them a chance at the end, the next speaker is Violet Collins, and I did see her in the list, so if Violet, if you could unmute yourself and turn on your video, you have the floor? And I'm sure I did see Violet in the list there. Okay, we'll give a little bit. Okay, perhaps she stepped away, the next speaker registered is Dennis Carlson, and I see him in the list, Dennis, yes, if you you have the floor? And I understand you have a PowerPoint, so you've got four minutes total, if you can manage that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna get myself organized here, and again, thank you very much to the committee for allowing me to share my PowerPoint. So my name is Dennis Carlson, I'm the president of the Sydney Community Association, my comments tonight are gonna be mostly focused around the feedback we received from the neighbors, our comments relative to the West Sydney Local Area Plan, and request should this council move this application forward. So as you well know, the residents needing to cross Pat Bay Highway, it's not a good environment, the residents of this new development would be facing the same challenges crossing Pat Bay Highway. The West Sydney Local Area Plan does reference the need for a potential overpass, I think that's a critical component of connecting this neighborhood to the rest of Sydney, in particular downtown. What is unclear to us is how this would be implemented, how it would be funded, what would be the timing. Turning to Beacon Avenue, I don't think anybody would argue that the environment along the frontage of Beacon Avenue is poor for both cyclists and pedestrians, and there's an opportunity here based on some of the cross-sections in the West Sydney Local Area Plan, that the Beacon Avenue frontage could certainly be improved, but again, it is unclear from the staff report whether this type of arrangement would be applied to the frontage of the site, and whether it would accommodate for pedestrians and cyclists. In terms of the proposal itself, as you heard from the applicant, this is a, will be a five-story building approximately 15 feet from the house that's shown in this picture, which is a one-story rancher at the end of Jan Place, the potential negative impact on their privacy and shadowing is something that we think needs to be addressed. In terms of Jan Place, the West Sydney Local Area Plan referenced Jan Place as the primary vehicle access for development adjacent on this site, as you can see from this image, that would be a major detrimental effect on this, and our concern is that this Jan Place is used as an access during construction. Turning to amenities, again, the West Sydney LAP talks about appropriate amenity policies for the west side, but it is unclear from the staff report and from any information that we can determine how this development would contribute towards amenities in West Sydney. Finally, if, and we recognize that the staff recommendation is that this application be tabled, but should council advance this application, we are requesting the following, that there be a reduce of the massing of the proposed building adjacent to Jan Place, as I've already noted, that the town pursue establishing a funding mechanism towards the construction of the Pat Bay Highway pedestrian overpass, and then that there be a section 19, 219, section 219 covenant as part of the development approval, that will do the following, include improvements in Beacon Avenue in accordance with the West Sydney LAP, and in particular, accommodating both cyclists and pedestrians, prohibit access to Jan Place during and after construction, require a construction management plan that includes trades parking and traffic management during construction, and finally, that the the development be required to contribute to approve amenities in the West Sydney neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. So our next speaker is Kathy Getty, and I see that you're in the list of speakers, could you unmute yourself and turn on your video, and you have the floor?
Hi, I just live over on Skylark Lane, and my concern is the traffic, the traffic right now is really hard to get off Galleran and turning left onto Beacon Avenue, put another 146 cars, you say they're only gonna go one way, well, how are they gonna turn around to go across Beacon Avenue?
Thank you for that question, I think the intent is to build a roundabout at Galleran and Beacon Avenue.
So you're gonna have big trucks trying to go through a roundy-round in that little space in front of Galleran, there's not enough room there?
So thank you for your question, the the roundabout was being designed to handle the West Sydney industrial The, the roundabout was being designed to handle the West Sydney industrial. There was some discussion about that during the approval of York Realty's development of the Amazon. So that is the answer, and they are intending to design it for big trucks. But anyway, thank you for asking your question, and I'm going to move on to our next speaker, which is Mr. Gerald Moffett. And he's in the council chamber with us. If you'd like to come up to the podium, press the button to turn on the microphone.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Town staff have had more than six weeks to prepare their sixty-page report on this project. Citizens have had only four days to consider both that report and the draft OCP before getting a few minutes to speak today about this project. I can only cover a few bullet points in the time available and must skip many key issues. What seems to have been forgotten is that this project is embedded in a residential neighborhood. Considering this project in the context of the draft OCP and the staff report, it is very clear that town planners have thrown the Galleran neighborhood under the bus. Galleran would be surrounded and overwhelmed by gigantic walls. Amazon to the west, this enormous project to the east, with future high-density walls extending unbroken to Henry Avenue and to Galleran Road, encircled on three sides. Moreover, in one stroke, this project alone would add approximately a hundred and forty-one housing units, when the current population, the current number of housing units in all of Galleran is only about a hundred and twenty. That's what overwhelming a neighborhood means. Town planners have been deaf to info, both from residents of the Galleran neighborhood and to other citizens in from Sydney. Deaf to citizens, but all ears for the developers. With respect to this project and its impact on the Galleran, this isn't a draft OCP and a staff report, it's a developer's manifesto. Sydney citizens have consistently emphasized one overriding value above all else. The charm and character of Sydney as a seaside town must not be lost. This project does the exact opposite. It betrays that goal and ideal. But beyond destroying one neighborhood, this enormous overdevelopment would have wider negative impact for all Sydney. It would be the public face of Sydney as you travel along the Pat Bay Highway. An immense billboard that screams, "This is just another soulless bedroom community of enormous bland and bleak apartment high-rises. Nothing of interest here, no reason to stop. Drive on." Moreover, this project is the camel's nose in the tent. With respect to other enormous high-rises outside the town, St. Cor, giant high-rises that will sprout up like mushrooms in low and moderate-density neighborhoods, and each of those in turn will be the pretext and precedent for adding yet others there and in other districts. Should there be new development in Sydney? Of course, yes, but not like this. Approve this project, and you've taken a big first step to gutting Sydney's character like a fish. Sydney will never be as affordable as Langford or Colwood, but with projects like this, it can be even uglier. Now, I'm not sure how I do for time, but I could even touch on the economics briefly. Why is this project even being seriously considered? In a nutshell, because the developer has uttered the magic words "affordable housing", making planners salivate like Pavlov's dog. There is no magic formula. Affordable housing is an extraordinarily difficult problem with no quick solutions. For better or worse, we live in a capitalist society. Developers aren't altruists, they're businessmen out to make a profit. Developers don't do subsidies. Only senior governments, large charities, and similar organizations do. And without such large real institutions involved, affordable housing is an illusion, window dressing, and a marketing slogan. I wish it weren't so, but it is. No, developers don't do subsidies. But they do sometimes, like other merchants hawking their wares, do lost leaders, giving with one hand and taking it back with the other. Developers are expert at marketing, and not just marketing to customers. No, a big part is marketing to town planners and town councils, selling them on the project. Gullible planners and councils are the developers' rightful victims if they don't pay attention. When a developer says below-market rentals, you may ask yourself, "Why would he do that? Why would he leave money on the table?" The real answer is that the developer isn't giving anything away. Developers don't do that. But only hard questions and careful analytical work will reveal where the cracks are in the illusory games. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. And our last registered speaker is Sandy Howard. And Sandy, if you're there, yeah, if you could unmute, then you have the floor.
I am here, and thank you. So tonight I am reaching out to the town and council to ask in the best interest for the current residents of West Sydney. Residents like myself, who have lived here for twelve years. I pay my taxes, I support local businesses, and I volunteer in the community. Unknown to me, Dennis, that picture that he used in his bi-presentation, that's my home. That's the home that I worked three jobs for five years to afford the down payment, and my home is going to be within twenty feet of a five-story apartment building. As others have already raised concerns about the size, the impact, the traffic, the pedestrian safety, I just wanted to focus on two items tonight in my time. The first item is this proposed development is located within one block of the massive Amazon Distribution Centre. We still do not understand the full impact of the traffic flow and congestion that will happen in this area, as that building is still in early, early stages of development. Certainly, we know the Amazon workers will significantly increase the pedestrian traffic in the area, as that is their, our only route for them to access the services in Sydney. They walk down Jan Place, and we're already seeing it with the construction workers. In addition, the Amazon workers will add additional traffic flow into the area, coming to work, going home from work, and then we also have the increased traffic from the Amazon delivery vehicles themselves. The second point I'd like to raise was an item that was in the staff plan, or staff report, apologies, and that is access to the development from Jan Place. So the current plan, the developer has proposed an emergency-only access from Jan Place. However, in the last paragraph on page five of the staff report, it states, "This emergency access point may become the primary vehicle access to the site in the long term if a grade-separated interchange is constructed at the intersection of Highway seventeen and Beacon Avenue." So as residents, we are very concerned about this proposed change. Jan Place is a very narrow road. We have no sidewalks, so pedestrians, bikes, and vehicles all share the road. When cars are parked on the side of the road, it reduces that access to a single lane. So with this proposed development of a hundred and forty-one units, conservatively, if one person from each unit made one trip in a day, that is an additional two-hundred-and-eighty-two times a vehicle will drive up and down our streets. So I understand that an impact traffic assessment study would be required. I ask that this traffic study also look at the impact that will happen to Jan Place, and I appeal to the town and the council to not allow the access to this huge development to be off of Jan Place. It will create just an unbelievable congestion point on our block. We know we're going to have people that go to the development parking on our street. That's a fact of life. Most of those units are going to have more than one car. Look at the pedestrian safety, the bicycle safety, our safety, and try to negotiate up into our homes. So I thank you for your time and consideration for tonight, and that's the end of my, my four minutes. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. So I'm just going to double back. We had two registered speakers who weren't there when I first called. Is Ken Rosatiak on? Okay, seeing not Violet Collins, are you there? Okay, well, apparently they're not ready to speak. So we'll consider the public participation closed, and now I'll open it up to committee to discuss where we want to go from here. Or additional questions or follow-up on what you heard during the public participation. It's for the committee, not for the audience, please. Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Just a question, Chair, through you two staff, in regards to if we were to, I'm just trying to understand better the process that would take place if we were to refute, refer this to APC. So I guess I'm, I'm sort of mindful of the, the developer's desire to move this along to APC to get additional input. Also seems to be a lot of input from the community, so I can see some value in that. So if we were to refer to APC, meanwhile, our OCP is carrying on its normal process, is it conceivable by, that the time it goes through APC, that we would have completed our OCP anyways? I'm just wondering if we could run it parallel?
Sure, through the Chair to Counselor O'Keefe. That is one of the options that's in the staff report on page nine of the staff report, is to refer this application on to Advisory Plan and Commission for more reviewing comment. Staff comments on that. If that option is preferred by council, we do recommend that the applicant submit a development permit application. Most of the information that, that would be required for the DP has already been submitted. There's just a few additional details that would help us assess the application against the zoning bylaw and against design guidelines, which is really one of the big things that APC focuses on as well. So it would be up to council on that, but it is a possibility. And in terms of timing, we would have to review the application, prepare that report to the Advisory Plan and Commission. That could indeed happen within the next few months, probably sooner than that. And as council indicated before, I think your intent was to complete the OCP review process in June or by June of this year. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Further from committee? Counselor Rintul?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And just to speak further to Counselor O'Keefe's question, I'll just remind committee members that we've recently seen a referral to APC, which was an OCP amendment as well as a zoning amendment on a project, and APC weren't comfortable, you know, generally speaking, providing comment on that. They acknowledged that we're close to seeing our OCP at that point in time out for consultation with the community. It's out now for consultation. I, I get seeing this, of course, referred to APC once we've got a development permit application, but I wouldn't support seeing it go out with the OCP amendment application, zoning amendment application at this point in time, because it would just have to be repeated again at a further date. So if, if you're comfortable, Chair, I'm happy to move the recommendations that's before us, or I'll yield to any further discussion if you'd prefer.
I think, let's just give committee a chance to ask any additional questions, and then I'll entertain a motion. Mayor McNeil Smith?
No questions, Chair. I was going to move a motion.
Okay. Does any member of committee have a question they want, or would you like to have a motion on the floor? I'm not, sorry, Counselor Garner?
Not a question. Just want to thank the community members for offering their input into this process. It's very much appreciated. Thank you, Chair.
Then I guess I'm looking for a motion, and we'll see where we go. Counselor Rintul?
I'll go to the mayor. I know he noted he had a motion, so I'll go to his motion.
Thank you, Chair. I will move the recommendation under, staff recommendation under option one, that the official community plan amendment application number OP one-zero-zero-three-six, zoning amendment application number RZ one-zero-zero-one-zero-four, bracket to amend the OCP and zoning designations of the property at two-one-eight-zero Beacon Avenue West in order to allow for the development of a five-story multifamily residential development containing a hundred and forty-one dwelling units, and bracket be tabled until the draft OCP review process has been completed and a new OCP has been adopted for the town, at which time the applications will be brought back from the table and considered by council.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded by Counselor Rintul. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you again, Chair. I certainly appreciate the presentation and the discussion this evening. I too am very interested to see new rental units for workforce housing and affordable housing, including in West Sydney. To those watching our meeting this evening, I want to be clear what the proponent has applied for and has not applied for. What the proponent has not submitted to staff and council is a development application, which follows a process to determine if a project will be approved. Much of the committee discussion tonight, and good points raised by the public, have been on aspects of the development that would and should be considered when a development application is submitted. What the proponent has submitted to staff and council is an OCP amendment application to change the land use designation for the property from commercial to multi-unit residential. The draft OCP that is currently out to the public for feedback proposes this particular change, and staff have spoken to that earlier this evening. So the proponent is asking for a change that is already in the draft OCP. I believe it would be confusing to the public and inappropriate to go through an OCP amendment process, including a public hearing for this property, at the same time the community is being asked to review and comment on the updated OCP. We initiated public engagements just last week. Thus, I support the staff recommendation to defer further consideration of this project until a meeting after the OCP has been approved, which is anticipated in June. I'd also like to comment that if the draft OCP is approved with a land designation change to multi-unit residential for this property, that does not greenlight this project. The proponent would still have to submit a development application and a zoning application and go, go through that full process. We know workforce housing and affordable housing is really needed in Sydney, and I look forward to reviewing development applications that address all of these important considerations. Thank you.
Does the secondor wish to speak?
Oh, thank you.
Any further speakers? I'll just speak briefly then. I, I can see some potential merit in sending it to APC, but only if APC was actually really going to look at it. And I can see a real challenge for them doing it without the actual development permit application. But most, a lot of the comments that were raised are things that actually are comments about the OCP, because the OCP, the draft OCP contemplates a development of this nature, possibly not this full height, because that is only possible with bonus density because of affordable housing. But in general, and actually probably a higher lot coverage, a lot of the comments that were made, though, are relevant to the OCP. And I guess the comment I'd make is that it's, it's rare in, in my time on council to see a development come forward and actually make it through the process unchanged, particularly if there are meaningful concerns from the neighborhood. particularly if there are meaningful concerns from the neighborhood, such as we've heard tonight. The concern I have with parking it until the OCP is done is those concerns basically just fester. Residents wonder whether council is, heard them and is going to do something about them. And you won't know until the OCP is over. Whereas if, if it was actually working its way through the approval process, you'd probably see a different development come out of it and maybe be a little more comfortable with the OCP designation. But I can't see us going down that route without a development permit application. So I think that tabling the OCP, tabling this application until the OCP is done is the right thing. It's just I have a concern about the OCP-related comments that we heard tonight and wanting to see those addressed. Possibly it can be done through the OCP process and frequently asked questions or that kind of thing. But anyway, that's my comments. I will support the motion. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? None. That's carried unanimously. Thank you, then. We will, the application is being tabled until the OCP review is done. That's it. And we'll just move on to the next agenda item then. So the next item is seven B. This is development permit application number DP 100824 and development variance permit application number DV 100309. This is 9617 Seventh Street. And it's to relax the maximum height in order to develop two single-family small lot dwellings. And we have a staff report and we have a presentation by the applicant Denise Kors, who's in the chamber tonight. You have the floor if you'd like to come to the podium. And I see the microphones on.
So, good evening to the Chair and members of the committee as a whole. My name is Denise Kors of Kors Development Services. The owner has asked me to assist them with both their application as well as this presentation tonight. So my presentation will provide details on information on the features of the development proposal, the variance request for height, the proposed designs, tree protection, and the sustainability features. So if you can start up the PowerPoint presentation. That looks like. Great, thank you. So to begin with, a bit about the development proposal, the existing house would be removed. And we're proposing ultimately a subdivision under the existing R13 zone. So the subdivision would create one additional lot for a total of two lots. Along with this application, we've provided house designs, a flood assurance statement, and a tree protection plan. So the figure here shows the proposed subdivision into two lots, each of which will be about approximately 255 square meters with a lot width of 7.62 meters. Our proposal, including the DP house designs, would conform to the existing zoning other than for height variance. And as you'll see through this, through this presentation, the house designs and the streetscape demonstrate a fit for this location. So a little more on planning considerations. The development is within the RES2 intensive single-family area in the Orchard area of Sydney. This is good infill, which is close to transit, schools, work, shopping, and parks. We're also consistent with our designs with the DP area objectives. We have provided both house designs and a landscape plan. And the height variance is related to the flood construction level. And again, I'll provide more information later in the, in the presentation. So if we look at the site plan, the setbacks are met or exceeded for the two new homes in relation to the proposed subdivision. Note also that we're staggering the front, front setback of lots A and B in order to protect the private tree, which is on lot B, the bottom lot. We are below the maximum site coverage of 35% for the main floor, and we're providing rear decks, yard areas, and parking off the rear lane. So the next few slides are providing some of the information in your packages for the proposed house designs. So here we can see the front and rear elevations. And on the side elevations, I draw your attention to the reduced window placements, particularly for the window elevations which are adjacent to existing homes. And a 3D perspective to show the house designs from the front. And I apologize, I'm not sure this staggering is quite as visible as it could be with the lot that's on the right. So the landscape plan demonstrates that other than the house itself and the parking pads, we're proposing permeable surfaces for the remainder, including lawn areas and two boulevard trees in the front of each of the lots, as well as rear lawn areas beside the, beside the decks. So a bit more on the streetscapes. I just draw your attention again to the additional separation for the house on the right, since their rear yard abuts this property line. And also note that the height is similar to the adjacent homes for these two in spite of the variance that we're requesting. And one more thing, we are extending the siding and providing additional landscape to, below the main floor level to enclose the main floor height increase walls. So as mentioned earlier, the lot characteristic set just over 255 square meters and lot width at 7.62. These are quite deep lots at 33.5, and we are just below the maximum lot coverage of 35%. And we also are proposing the variance for the height. So as you can see here, the maximum permitted is eight meters. We're proposing 9.34 and 9.41 respectively for lots A and B. The houses will be approximately 1600 square feet. Side setbacks will be the 1.2 minimum, and we're exceeding the front and rear setbacks as noted in the last column. Again, the figure below shows the property in relation to the existing homes in the area. So as promised, a little bit more on the flood construction level. So staff, in this case, staff required that the flood construction level be met with this application. So a covenant option wasn't permitted for this application. And I also note that the flood construction level was based on the geotechnical conclusions, which are not just anticipated sea level rise, but includes also assumptions around storm surges. And also, we have to measure to the bottom of the main floor joints, joists. So there's additional elevation increase there as well. But the good news is that meeting this requirement ensures climate resiliency and property protection for the future homeowners. So as mentioned earlier, the policy states the flood construction level of 5.11. The existing average grade is at 3.28, so we can see there's quite a bit of additional height that's required. We've tried to minimize that as much as possible through the use of eight-foot ceilings. And our geotech engineer has provided us with a flood assurance statement. So one of the options would have been to raise the grade through fill placement. Our geotech recommended against it due to the highly compressible soils in the area and also the difficulty with matching the interface of existing grades on adjacent properties, as well as at the front and the rear. However, the good news is it does create a very large heated crawl space for storage for this, for these homeowners. So just a little bit about the development permit considerations. We did vary, our designer varied the massing and roof lines and window placements, exterior finishing materials. We also, as mentioned earlier, staggered the front setbacks to provide a bit variation in the front views of the two new homes. There is a front street presence now with the stairways going to the front doors, as well as privacy for the future owners in their rear yards. There is ample storage, as mentioned earlier, with the crawl spaces and the landscaping and siding that's being located beside the additional wall height between the ground, the ground level and the first floor. And finally, we are providing parking off the rear lane, which is provided at one parking stall per lot. Second last slide here on the trees. So we had an arborist take a look at the protected tree, which is in this figure here, which is a private tree. So by law protection, we were able to retain that tree by pushing that house back further. We had also provided recommendations for protection of that tree during construction. That resulted in a five-meter further setback beyond the typical one for that one, for the root protection zone, which also included excavation areas that would be required for the footing installations. We are proposing two boulevard trees, and the landscape plan has incorporated all this information as well. So finally, a little bit about climate change and sustainability features. Again, as mentioned earlier, infill development helps keep development compact and provides homes for people which are close to populated areas, transits, in this case, transit, school, parks, shopping, work, and recreation. We'd be constructing to step three of the energy code and are proposing that the homes will be solar-ready. We have ensured their limited stormwater impacts through the use of permeable surfaces in the landscaping plans. And finally, there is resiliency associated with meeting the requirements of the flood assurance statement. So at this point, I welcome your questions.
So are there any questions from committee? And could we take down the slides so we can see the other committee members? Counselor Garnett?
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Kors. It, it looks good, and I understand the flood construction level and all you've gone to, to, and the necessity of it, given the area where the house is being built. I just, one question and one comment. The question is, I, I realize you're living, you're, you're dealing with a limited amount of space and what you can build, but was there any consideration to building, design, accommodating a suite of any kind?
It was a consideration at the very start. With such a small floor area permitted, given the, the lot coverage, we're still only at 1600 with two floors, which is quite small. Is it possible that a future owner could change the floor plans to incorporate a suite? There is a door at the back off the deck, so it's potentially possible. But we didn't make that a part of this existing proposal at this time.
Thank you. And the comment I have is just, I appreciate very much the fact that you were willing to adjust your, your design to accommodate the protected tree. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
That's nice to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Fallon?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to the presenter, yes, I'd like to echo Counselor Garnett's comments. I'm pleased that you made the effort to protect the tree and also that it enhances the design of the subdivision by staggering the houses as opposed to putting them side by side. Quick question regarding the crawl space and flood control curiosity. Is there anything in the construction materials being used that should there be a flood and water in the crawl space that starts to impact the material that's there? Are there anything, like, are you doing anything different with the materials, steel posts, beams, anything like that? That's a curiosity. I don't know if anything has been done for construction of houses that are in the flood level areas.
I'm not a designer, so I'll admit I don't have a lot of experience with what that might look like or even be. But I will observe that the walls would be concrete. And so the ability for water to get in may be somewhat limited. I'm, I'm not going to say for sure it would be. And we also discussed the potential for using metal joists instead of wood ones to reduce the floor level a little bit further. But that's got a high cost, a value for it. So the team decided to continue with the wood joists and to establish the base of the wood joists at the flood level.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from committee? Or would someone like to make a motion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you. I would move the recommendation that development permit application number DP 100824 to permit the construction of two small lot, single-family dwellings and development variance permit application number DV 100309 to relax the requirements for maximum height for the property at 9617 Seventh Street be forwarded to the Advisory Planning Commission for review and comment.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And, and we do, I, I just want to echo the comments from, from previous counselors. It's, previous council members. It's nice to see this, this gentle infill density that's worked well in this neighborhood to date and the considerations that you've given in this development. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Call the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that's unanimous. Okay. And we'll move on to the next item, seven C. This is development permit application number DP 100828. This is 2270 Harbor Road to develop a three-story mixed-use marine industrial multifamily residential development containing marine, commercial, industrial space and a total of four dwelling units. And we have a presentation by Scott Davies.
Hello, it's Niall Paul Teal from Ascend Planning here today this evening. Here to address council on this item, and I do have a presentation I'm able to share on my screen if that's warranted.
Great. Thank you. You have the floor. And if, if you'd like to give the presentation, go ahead. We do have the staff report, but your presentation would be welcome.
Is that visible to everyone now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me here this evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Niall Paul Teal, speaking today on behalf of Ascend Planning and Mr. Davies with Cube Project Management for the DP application at 2270 Harbor Road. First off, I always start by acknowledging the traditional territory, the Wasanik peoples, to which we're gathered today and to which this application is on. My hope today is to basically just introduce our project, provide some context and planning rationale for, which supports the application, as well go into some of the design and landscape considerations, and then provide opportunity for any questions or discussion. And of course, I'd like to acknowledge we are, we've worked well over the past months with staff. And ultimately, the two outstanding items within the staff report include the construction flood plane, which RISAC Geotechnical Services is concluding now with no concerns whatsoever. And we should have that back to you, certainly well in advance of coming back to council if this does move to the Advisory Planning Committee. And secondly, the parking standards that staff noticed, noted within the drive aisle. And we have provided a supplemental engineering report by our civil engineers at Huel Engineering, which provides two options to council to consider. And either option, based on staff's comments and recommendations, would be completely accommodating within the, within the drive aisle recommendation. So the property itself is within the Harbor Road area as identified within the official community plan. As you see, we are located off of Rest Haven Drive and adjacent to the Van Al Marina to the east. In more close proximity, you can see the property there next to the Van Al Marina. And of course, you, there's Griffith Road, which runs along the property. It is the primary access for both the Marina and the business today, and it will maintain being the primary access in, within this proposal, as well as you can see our access maintains, maintains on Harbor Road by Rest Haven. The property itself, you may remember, was formerly known as the, the Blue Peter Pub. Here's a photo from it that I found from a news article in 2009. And then, of course, in 2011, there was the tragic fire that demolished the, the building and ended the business at that time. The property has sat vacant with the exception of parking for the, for the Marina itself. The building itself has completely, completely been demolished, as well as the previous owner had, had removed any, any trees on the property. So today, you can see it's, it's boarded up with the exception of a, of a, of a small public access to the, to the Marina on site. So our objectives within this project is to re- So our objectives within this project is to reinvest within this neighborhood, establish new marine-oriented, industrial service-oriented office and employment opportunity, facilitate living in place and live-work opportunities, develop a concept which supports the existing bylaws and Town of Sydney planning policies within both the current OCP, the current Harbor Road area designation, and also making a nod to the, the moves that are anticipated in the draft official community plan. And finally, establish a plan which complements the existing neighborhoods and enhances the character. I should mention as well in, in number four, the concept we are putting forward this evening is in line with the zoning bylaw. We're not requesting any variances and the, and the, and we are, we are aligned with the official community plan. I'm not going to recite to you the entire official community plan and objectives that we're in keeping with, but one thing I'll point out is, as pointed out in the staff report, we, we do align with a number of the objectives. Mainly, it really is about finding a gentle way to integrate the more industrial marine uses and support the facilitation of additional supportive marine uses in and amongst the housing that, that surrounds the property. And so we, we do that by working within the existing zoning bylaw and creating kind of a thoughtful transition that takes people from the roadway all the way through to the waterfront and, and provides a, a, a safe and, and reliable access for residents and businesses and, and, and visitors alike. Again, within the Harbor Road policy, I'm not going to recite this all to you, but the, the main thing here is that we are working to create a kind of industrial feeling character, modernizing the, the current neighborhood and coming up with a contemporary design. You can see here, we've got corrugated metal as well as Corten steel, which is a modern take on the traditional kind of industrial uses within the area and, and, and using it kind of playful way to make a nod to the, the existing marine uses to the, both the east and the west of us. So the, the layout contemplates four buildings on the property. Two buildings would face Harbor Road and two buildings would be in the center of the property. These buildings shield all but three parking stalls. The three parking stalls along Harbor Road would be the onsite parking. The rest of them are shielded in behind the building and only accessible via Griffith Road. The buildings themselves are placed evenly apart and provide both a breakup visually from the streetscape and also provide, as you can see, that clear linear access that takes people north to south through the site with a safe vehicle separated access all the way from the public to go to the water, waterfront without having to interface directly onto Griffith Road. Again, this thoughtful transition from the waterfront to the, to the water or, and, and to the road, pardon me, is, is supported and contemplated within the local area plan as well as the official community plan. Again, we, we believe that the design objectives here, both from the, the view from Harbor Road as well as looking up from Griffith Road, work within the, the natural slope of the building or of the, of the site to provide parking and vehicle access opportunities as well as create a nice diverse makeup for the, for the property. The building themselves, so this is a typical building layout for the two on Harbor, on Harbor Road itself. You can see from the front elevation, we have a commercial CRU space that you would see from Harbor Road, marine supportive commercial use. The upper level or the middle level would be an office space and then the upper level is, is a one, single unit of residential. And there is a rooftop patio with contemplated ability for solar access on the rooftop. In the rear of the property, you can see that we have these garage bays that would be used for storage and for other marine supportive facilities. Again, then you can see the office space from the other side of the building and the residential balconies from the, from the upper floor on the two buildings that front onto Harbor Road. Similarly, the buildings on Griffith Road, building three and building four, this is a typical elevation. Again, because of the way the building or the property steps down, the, the ground level wouldn't be visible from the Harbor Road side or the south side of the building. You would be immediately walking onto the, the second floor office space, but then from the, the lower access, you can see that the rear elevation exposes the additional set of garages and the offices on top and of course, the residential unit above. I should add that all four of the residential units will be built to adaptive standard as well. All four of them will have elevator access for each of the units, which both supports the commercial and the, the office and the, the residential uses. For landscape and parking, as mentioned, we do exceed the, as mentioned in the staff report, we do exceed the minimum parking standards for, for all of the contemplated uses on the property. We also, I addressed the local area plan by ensuring that any hard surfaces are, have a variety of materials and create an interesting appearance. We also position them away from the street and ensure that landscaping also screens a lot of the parking areas. If you go back or if you go around the property today, you'll notice there's quite a sea of concrete and asphalt on the property and the, the addition of landscaping really does create a more interesting and more dynamic outlook to the property. And of course, as I'll mention in, in a moment, also help support rainwater management. We do want to create that courtyard feeling for people as they traverse through the property or along the property line on Harbor Road and view the property. So we do have these nice brick pavers that also support rainwater management. We created a very interesting walkway connection through the property with overhead hanging lighting. As well, we create a nice activated street prunage that, that provides public safety to and from the waterfront. Because of the industrial nature of the buildings, we did want to kind of soften that a little bit. That's why you see vine planting on the sides of the buildings. Following the local, the, the official community plan policies, both current and contemplated, we do include indigenous and drought resistant plants. And all of this has been supplied by a very talented landscape architect, Murdock de Greath, who is extremely experienced in, in working within Greater Victoria. So again, I, I don't need to rehash this, but there's the, there's the overall landscape plan. And on the right-hand side of your screen there, you'll see a cross section of the neighborhood walkway that includes that overhead lighting and that pedestrian right-of-way that will take individuals down to the, safely to the waterfront. Rainwater management, as mentioned, we, we're taking innovative rainwater management best practices, including but not limited to rainwater gardens with exposed water management overflow that then goes to a retention pond on the property, permeable paving wherever possible that, that does create, create a sophisticated way to ensure that rainwater is flowing into the property and being retained as opposed to flowing into the water. As you can imagine right now, again, it's an older built asphalt parking lot. There's not a lot of opportunities to catch and clean rainwater and especially when we are contemplating these uses that are supported within the OCP such as, you know, marine commercial and other, other activities such as that within the property, we certainly want to make sure that we are responsibly collecting and treating white rainwater before it goes anywhere near our, our precious waterfront. I'm not going to rehash these, but just recap the, the project objectives, working within the existing planning context, supporting it and creating a thoughtful live-work opportunity that really speaks to enhancing the marine commercial sector within Sydney and, and doing it in a thoughtful and, and meaningful way for this property while working completely within the existing zoning bylaw. And thank you very much. That's my brief presentation. I hope I haven't gone on too long and appreciate your time this evening and I'm happy to answer any questions and again, appreciate staff's comments and recommendation and hope for the opportunity to present this to the advisory planning committee.
Okay, thank you. Questions from committee? Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Paul Teal, for your presentation. I just have one quick question and a system reference for clarity with the reference to the elevator. I'm assuming that elevator would provide access to the rooftop patio?
Yes, the, the elevator would run through the, the entire building, so it would provide access all the way from the commercial level or the, the ground level garages all the way up to the, to the rooftop patio.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Other questions from committee? Or Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Chair. Not a question, just a comment. And I just want to say I'm, I'm happy to see this proposal come forward. I don't recall when we had anything significant in the Harbor Road area that would help our marine sector sort of build and expand. They're an important part of our economy, so I, I'm happy to see this come forward. I like the live-work aspect. I like the attention that you've paid to rainwater management and being mindful of the runoff going into the water. So lots of good things here. So just wanted to say, thank you for bringing the proposal forward.
Thank you. And Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of questions. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Mr. Paul Teal. So first question is regarding the two buildings on Harbor Road, facing Harbor Road. And the, and I think the, the submission is, is fairly clear that on the ground floor, it will be retail uses, so those will be active, active storefronts to the, to the streets. And the second story will be, is intended to be offices or additional retail service. But the building is, is three stories on the front and on the back. And so when you look at the depth of the building, if, if you're doing warehousing in the, on the ground floor at the rear, how deep will the, how deep will the retail service areas be at the front roughly?
Give me thirty seconds as I zoom in, please. The retail area will be, it, it has a, and I'm just going off of approximation here, it's about a fourteen-foot depth.
Okay. So a little shallow, but I appreciate, I appreciate the design of the overall, overall design to, to the development. And when you look at the, at the rear of the, of the four buildings, you see what appear to be garage doors, but, but this is the warehousing. Is the intention possibly to, to rent these out as, as a storage units, individual storage units?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a great question and, and the idea really is around flexibility in general here. And so the, yeah, so one owner would be able to either retain them all in, in, as, as one use or, or be able to, to potentially rent them out individually as well.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is, is a follow-up to, to Counselor Garnett's with regards to elevators. And, and you noted the, the elevator access to, to the rooftop as well and that there's a rooftop, rooftop patio space on the four buildings. The, the challenge I have is, is, and this is a comment, the challenge I have, and perhaps you would address the comment, is, is that an elevator needs a, however height it goes to, it needs something on top of it to, to operate the elevator system. So if, if you did not have rooftop access, you would have a small, a small building on, on the roof to, to handle the elevator, to, to carry it to the third floor. But if you're going to provide elevator access to the rooftop, you're in essence going up another floor and having to, to create that as, as a taller structure on the roof. And I've noticed, I've noticed this around Sydney in a few locations and it, and quite frankly, it, it starts to affect the appearance, appearance when you're at a distance, you know, approaching buildings from any direction. Could you, could you comment on that and the need for, for these rooftop patios? Particularly because the buildings are staggered in height, you know, to the water.
Yeah. So I'm going to start by apologizing as I'm looking at the plans right now and, and this might be by Ms. Herr Haggins about to probably perhaps cut me off as well. I just reviewed the plans as well. There, there, I, I would stand corrected, the rooftop patio is not accessible by elevator. Every other floor is accessible by elevator. So the rooftop, so the, the parafit that you'll notice in the top of the building is actually for stair access to the rooftop. But you're absolutely correct. The, the two issues that we would run into if there was a rooftop access by elevator would be, we would be exceeding our height, height restrictions and asking for a variance, which we're not doing. And then number two is the other issue, you're quite correct, Mayor McNeil Smith, is there's an aesthetic aspect to it as well that we would be, we'd be running up against and, and perhaps even competing with some of the, the policies for how, how these buildings are characterized along the streetscape. And so you're, you're absolutely correct. So to answer the first question, I was incorrect and as I, as I flip through it now, the only access to the rooftop is by stairs, but the other three stories are accessible by both elevator and stairs.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. So I, I guess now that you've found that answer to that question, I, I'm curious as to how, if the building's accessible, then basically if somebody has accessibility issues, they can't use their rooftop patio. And I'm not sure how that fits into the narrative of how the building's supposed to work. If you provide comment on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The, we, we take adaptive design when going through landscape, civil and of course, architectural review for these buildings seriously. The, you know, adaptive design doesn't just, or accessible design doesn't just start and end at, at the parking stall. It, we, we ensure that lobbies, accesses and et cetera are accessible by elevator. And when I, when I say the units are adaptive, what I mean is the residential units and of course, the commercial would be as well, but the resident, or office would be as well. But the residential unit is adaptive and designed to, to support adaptive design. There are balconies and, and on, on each of the residential units at the residential level. So in the event that you had additional accessibility requirements, that would be something we'd have to take under advisement and, and look into how exactly the access from the rooftop would be addressed ultimately if an individual was, anyway, I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that and, and confirm that scenario.
Would, would this, having not been in the stairwell and seeing what it's set up like, would it be, could it be fitted for a stair lift?
Pretend, again, I don't want to make any promises on the spot. I'd, I'd have to take a look and, and get back to you.
Please. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from committee or a motion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
I'm happy to move the staff recommendation that development permit application number DP one zero zero eight two eight to permit the development of four three-story mixed-use buildings be forwarded to the advisory planning commission for review and comment, subject to the condition that prior to review by the APC, the applicant provides, one, a revised flood hazard assessment identifying proposed uses and confirming that all potential uses and proposed floor areas can be safely used for the uses intended. And two, additional turning template information for the proposed upper parking area showing how vehicles larger than a compact passenger vehicle would maneuver in and out of the parking area.
Second.
And, okay, that's seconded. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for bringing this proposal forward. I think it's, it's a good, a good project in that it maintains the marine industrial and Marina uses intended in the marine, in the Harbor Road marine area, but additionally brings four residential units above these, above these marine uses and that's a benefit to Sydney overall in terms of additional housing. And as I say, maintaining the marine industrial and Marina uses. And indeed, it looks like it may be adding a, a unique component to the marine uses in terms of having some warehousing capacity. Appreciate the staff bringing forward the, addressing the flood hazard assessment and, and turning situations and look forward to, to that going to APC and comments coming back. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I, I have to say, I find the whole plan rather intriguing. There's lots of things I like about it. I like the pedestrian path that walks down the middle and promotes social activity. I like the fact that it's quite desolate as I went there the other day and the fact that there will be greenery and trees adding to our communities a benefit. The rainwater management that Counselor O'Keefe alluded to. The, the rooftop patio, having an outdoor space in an area like that is important. The only concern I have would be trying to make it truly accessible and allowing the person who has mobility issues the ability to use that space, but other than that, I'm happy to, yes, on the recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven D. This is development permit application number DP one zero zero eight two nine. This is nine-nine-eight-nine and nine-nine-nine-one Fifth Street. It's to develop a four-story nineteen-unit multifamily residential development. And we've got a presentation, we've got Peter DeHugue and also Cleona Flanagan. So the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cleona Flanagan. I'm one of the project managers on the project. This development permit recently expired, so we have gone in again for the development permit. We have no variances. We just have some changes in accordance with the bylaws as advised. We just have some changes in accordance with the bylaws as advised by the staff. I believe we have addressed all of those. And I believe we're in a good place. And I'm going to hand over to Peter DeHugue to continue the conversation about the development.
Okay, thank you Cleona. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And you can see the screen?
Yes.
Great, okay, this is the... These are the drawings that are in your staff report. And I'll just quickly page through them just to outline the kind of, how we got here, just a little bit of history and just some of the updates that have been made in this new application. So essentially, this is a resubmission of an application that we made in 2018, which was then approved for a development permit. And we have since submitted for a building permit as well. The development permit expired this year. And so we, actually, I guess it was, it's not this year, it was just at the end of last year. So we resubmitted the application. And there were some changes in the...
I think we just lost Mr. DeHugue. So we'll give him a minute or so to see if he comes back. However, committee does have the entire package. And this is, as I understand it, relatively minor changes from the previous development permit that was approved but has expired. Yeah, it... So committee, we could... Okay, we've got Cleona back, but not Mr. DeHugue.
Yeah, so I guess if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
So committee, are there questions? Council Garnet?
Thank you Chair, thank you Ms. Flanagan, sorry for losing your partner there. I do have a couple of questions. One, on doing a site visit, I was quite surprised to see the amount of water. And apart from being a little unsightly, because you can actually see through the fence covering, my concern is around safety. And you do have a fence there and that does provide some level, but teenagers being teenagers, or kids being kids, I'm worried about somebody falling in. Can you speak to whether that's going to be pumped out of there in a fairly timely manner?
So obviously, we've just got through the rainy season and we could be pumping it out every day. We decided to do it then. We have pumped it out in the past and it's built up again. So yes, it is our intention now that the weather has settled to pump them again. And to stay on top of it. Now, having said that, we monitor it all the time. And we are fortunate to have a relationship with the neighbors on both sides and they keep us well informed of activities.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if you can speak to this other question I have. But with regards to the actual plan of the building and the footprint of it, with regards to the protected trees that are in question that are in the staff report, is there any thought given to altering the floor plan or the footprint so that at least some of these trees can be salvaged or saved?
So, I don't know if I can speak to that very well, Peter would be better on that one. But we are following the Arbor Support and what they have recommended on protecting the trees that we can protect to ensure that we meet the requirements.
Thank you.
And we have discussed everything with the neighbors as well as to what their concerns are about trees.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Council Rento?
Thank you Chair. So Ms. Flanagan, thanks very much for joining us this evening. Unfinished projects or unstarted projects and temporary fencing aren't necessarily attractive, as we all know. What's the reality like that this project's moving forward on a timely basis now?
So it is our intention to start in the late spring. Obviously, we need to have the development permit in place to start that process. We had already submitted the building permit, so we were underway. And maybe it was a little bit of dropping, not dropping the ball, but not seeing that the development permit was about to, was to be expired on our part. So it happened and it was definitely on our plate. But yes, it is our intention to get started in the spring.
And what was the nature of the delay? Because it would have been open for a couple of years, the permit?
Just other commitments, to be honest. And also a little bit of a challenge with tying down GCs and subcontractors. I mean, as, I don't know, as you're aware and as you see, a lot of businesses get started installed. And we really did not want to do that. We didn't want to get started and install in, for example, pre-landing stage. So it was a decision we did make.
So we have Mr. DeHugue back. And I guess there was a question about tree preservation that... Did you want to refer that to him?
Yes, Chair, I'm handing over to you.
And we'll just make sure that Peter's back securely. I see he's still muted.
Okay, there. I'm sorry, my computer just crashed. The whole thing just shut down, I don't know why.
Understood. So... We've got your package, all your plans and such in our agenda package. And I think we've actually moved on to questions. And Council Garnet's got a question about some of the trees on the site.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, no, I was just wondering if you had given consideration to altering the footprint to allow for the retention of the protected trees in terms of their critical root zones?
Well, we have tried to create approximately a two-meter, I believe, zone for the, in the southeast corner, there's a fir tree on the adjacent property that we think we will be able to maintain that tree. And I don't think there are any other trees. There's a hawthorn along... I believe it's on Henry. And it is too close to the, too close to the property line.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Okay, Council Fallon?
Thank you Mr. Chair. Mr. DeHugue, a question regarding climate change and the impact. So I'm looking at the building and it's hard to tell in the drawings. My concern is shading for the windows and overhangs. And what in your design have you done? Are you looking at heat pumps or some sort of window coverings to protect the owners, the residents, from strong heat buildup?
Yes, there's a couple of things that... We have sort of limited the number of windows on the south side, which is where the major heat gain is going to be. The corners still have some windows, but otherwise it's mostly smaller windows. There is going to be heat pumps in the roof. The roof that you see actually is sort of, let's call it a false roof inside the actual roof level behind that metal, sloped metal parapet. It's quite a bit lower, so it hides all the heat pumps that will be installed on the roof. And yes, all of the suites will have, not only all of the HRVs, heat recovery units, and ventilation requirements that we have put into these new buildings, which are, you know, significantly insulated and airtight. But we will be providing air conditioning as well.
Thank you for that. Thank you Mr. Chair.
Okay, other questions from committee? We do have one speaker for public participation. So, questions? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you Chair, I do have a question. And I'd be happy if the proponent wishes to address it, but I'll actually direct it to staff because it's in the report. And we have had a letter of correspondence to us this evening from the residents who live in the adjacent townhouse. The proponent has already indicated that they've spoken with these individuals. But specifically, the report, I'm quoting now, "The report indicates that moderate to heavy impacts are expected on the critical root zone of the protected Douglas fir tree. And that while the applicant will try to protect it during construction, the report anticipates its removal and replacement." The property owner would be required to attain adjacent property owner's consent and apply for a tree removal permit. Well, what happens in the scenario that the adjacent property owner doesn't wish to give consent?
Yes, can I speak to that?
Please.
The fir tree is actually on the property to the south, which is, it's not the townhouse property, it's on the property of the apartment building that's directly to the south. I spoke with the gentleman when we were beginning to do our sort of site investigations and talking about the trees, who actually planted that tree. And he said that the adjacent, the strata that's adjacent to the south would love to see that tree not there. But because it's, and he said that he planted it with his granddaughter when she was given a seedling at school. And had brought it home, and so they went to the back corner of that property and planted the tree. And I guess that was probably, you know, maybe thirty or forty years ago. I don't, it may not be as long ago as that. So my understanding is, is that the adjacent strata is not enamored with the tree. And clearly, we would replace that tree with a significant, you know, sort of alternate species that would be able to thrive in that spot.
And if I may add to that, so we have actually been in constant communication with Brad and the neighbors in the townhouse. Brad is in the condo building. And they, yes, both parties one hundred percent would like to explore removing the tree. They're actually nervous of the tree in its current state. And the attraction it causes to certain animals in the tree. So yes, we are constantly talking to them about that and they would like to pursue that.
Thank you, I appreciate those clarifications and would also give staff an opportunity if they wish.
Yep, staff?
Thank you. So the Arborist report submitted with this application, it's on page twenty-one of twenty-two in the package for this application. The report says that they will make attempts to retain the tree, but the Arborist anticipates, as it is said in the staff report, moderate to heavy impacts on the root system of the trees, given that the excavation would, the underground parking would come very close to property line there. So that would impact the critical roots zone of the tree. And then also in the Arborist report, there's a note about replacement planting, saying two replacement trees are required to mitigate the anticipated disturbance to the offsite Douglas fir tree. That's this one southeast of this property on the adjacent condo development on Fifth Street there. So that's what staff was referring to in the report. While the applicant said they would do their best to keep it and intend to keep it, staff here anticipate that the excavation and just the extent of that into the critical root zone would compromise the health of those roots. And the tree would have to come out if it's built as it's proposed. And if a neighboring strata or property owner did not give permission for the removal of the tree, then that would force the redesign of the development to avoid that critical root zone.
Thank you Chair, I appreciate that response from staff and appreciate that in the letter we received from the adjacent townhouse owner, not on the property, the strata property that the tree is planted, that their concern is that if the tree is retained, that there is already damage to it and there would be damage that would risk their structure if the tree were to, if the tree were to fall. So thank you again.
Council Garnet?
Thank you Chair, through to staff. Do we have an Arborist report on the current health of that tree?
Yes, through the Chair to Council Garnet. The Arborist report submitted by the applicant assesses the health is good, structural condition is good, and is it a bylaw-protected tree? Yes. So they have said it is in good condition.
Thank you very much, thank you Chair.
Thank you. So committee, I'd like to turn to public participation on this and then we'll come back to finish it off. We have one speaker registered, that's Grant Taylor. I see you in the participant list. If you could unmute and turn on your video, you have the floor. Mr. Taylor? And we'll give a minute or so. Mr. Taylor? It's public participation time, if you're there.
Yes Chairman, I'm here. I wasn't really prepared to make a lot of comments about this. I think most of our concerns have actually been discussed already by the various speakers. We have voted for the tree in the past AGM, we have voted for the tree to be taken down. And my understanding is that the neighbors also are in favor of the tree being taken down. So there's no hesitation there. Our concerns, if the tree is retained by the Sydney bylaws, whatever, that if the root structure is damaged, then there is a risk that the tree may well fall down. So, you know, that is our concern. And the consequent liability, if that happens, who would be liable for damage or injury? So that's really our position.
Okay, thank you. So, Council Garnet?
I'm ready to move the recommendation if there's no other comment.
Are there any questions or follow-up from committee? Go ahead with your motion.
I'll move that development permit application number DP 100829 to permit the development of a four-story nineteen-unit multifamily residential development at 9989 and 9991 Fifth Street be forwarded to the Advisory Planning Commission for further review and comment.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I'm more than willing to move this on to APC, but I do have concerns again, and I've brought these up in the past, with removal of protected trees, and in this case, a healthy tree. Trees not even on the designated property. There's boulevard trees involved, there's another paper birch tree that's referenced in here. The one on the property line's a whole other issue. But there's four trees that actually aren't on the property that's being developed, that will be removed from our community when we're in sore need of them. So I'm saddened by it. And unfortunately, this seems to be happening all too often. And just to comment one up out there that it's disappointing from that perspective. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to item number 8A. This is the liquor license amendment application, expansion of the liquor service areas, Mary Winspear Center. We've got a staff report, we heard the comments and the public participation. This looks pretty straightforward. Would anyone like to ask a question, make a motion? Council Garnet?
Thank you Chair. I'm just curious, under A, the letters to, with a hundred meters, is that actually going to go to anybody based on where Mary Winspear is? I'm curious as to how many people would actually get the letter. Just can staff comment on that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, through the Chair to Council Garnet. Yeah, admittedly, it wouldn't be many properties hit by that, just a handful.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you Chair.
Okay, would someone like Mayor McNeil Smith?
I'll move the staff recommendation. Number one, that staff be directed to gather the views of residents regarding the proposed changes to the liquor primary license for 2243 Beacon Avenue, the Mary Winspear Center, and report back to council with the results. Two, that the methods used to gather residents' views include the following and that any written correspondence received be forwarded to council for consideration. A, that owners and tenants in occupation of property within a hundred meters, three hundred and twenty-eight feet of 2243 Beacon Avenue be notified by mail. And B, that advertisements be placed in two consecutive issues of the Peninsula News Review. And three, that council provide a special public participation opportunity at the council meeting where the public may speak to the proposal.
Second.
So that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Just a brief comment and a thank you to Mr. Sutton from the Mary Winspear, speaking to council this evening. We're certainly impressed with the resilience that the Mary Winspear Center has demonstrated. Uh, we're certainly impressed with the resilience that the Mary Winspear Center has demonstrated during, uh, during the pandemic, and that the temporary license granted by the province was of benefit to the center, and there were no complaints, and, um, look forward to hearing the public's comments, uh, on this, thank you.
Um, Counselor Garnett?
Thank you Chair, just, I, I fully support this, um, but, but I, I do think I have to add a caveat in the sense that there's a part in the, in the staff report that speaks to, uh, potential of noise concerns, it, are reduced by where, where the, where it's located, and, uh, where I previously resided, um, when there were concerts or, uh, weddings or whatever have you at the facility, and I was over by Mary, Mary Bloom's Cafe, um, off Canora, I could hear quite easily when the doors were open, uh, for people to, to cool off the building or come outside to have a cigarette or whatever have you, I could hear conversations and the music quite well, actually. So, i- i- it, there will be an impact on neighbors, and they will be further away than you think, the sound apparently carries very well, because I could actually hear full-on conversations from my back deck with my windows open as well, so it's just something that for, for rest of council to be aware that there, 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 there will be noise concerns for some people, whether or not i- it impacts them or not, I don't know, based on the time it's gonna be open, but, um, firsthand experience can tell you that, that it, there is impacts from noise. So, thank you, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll call the question, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Uh, seeing none, that's unanimous and carried. We'll move on to eight B, uh, liquor license amendment application to extend hours of operation. This is for Beacon Brewing, and, uh, we have a staff report, uh, there is no presentation. Uh, committee, what's your pleasure? Are there questions, or would someone like to make a motion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Okay, I'll, I'll do it this time. I'll move the recommendation, one, that staff be directed to gather the views of residents regarding the proposed amendments to the applicant's manufacturer license with lounge area endorsement for nine-eight-two-nine Third Street, Beacon Brewing, and report back to council with the results. Two, that the methods used to gather residents' views include the following, and that any written correspondence received be, be forwarded to council for consideration. A, that owners and tenants in occupation of property within a hundred meters, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet of nine-eight-two-nine Third Street be notified by, by mail. B, that advertisements be placed in two consecutive issues of the Peninsula News Review. And three, that council provide a special public participation opportunity at the council meeting where the public may speak to the proposal.
Is there a secondary?
Second.
That's moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, Counselor Garnett?
Thank you Chair, uh, just a question through you to staff, um, in the second paragraph under background, it, it, it indicates the initial license was approved with hours of liquor service between eleven-thirty AM to eight PM, Sunday through Mondays, was that supposed to be Thursdays?
Uh, yes, very likely.
Okay.
So, yeah, so Fridays and Saturdays were till eleven, and then everything else was till eight.
Okay, and just for clarification for, um, the public, and, um, just, just to say that, um, these hours are, are similar to what we grant for the Small Gods Brewery up the street, and I have no concerns, because this is actually inside a building, or as I had concerns before because of the outside patio, so, thank you Chair.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimous, and that completes our business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Uh, moved by Mayor McNeil Smith.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and we're adjourned, thanks very much.